So I will call to order the regular meeting of the Clayton City Council on Tuesday, April 5th, 2022 at 7:01 PM. And up first on the agenda is the meeting protocol video. Janet, would you please do the honor?
I will actually.
Roll call is first.
Oh, yeah, that's roll call. I skipped right on over that, didn't I?
Yeah, no problem. So Councilmember Diaz?
Yes, I'm present.
Councilmember Juan?
Here.
Councilmember Wolf?
I am here.
Vice Mayor Tillman?
I'm here.
And I still do not see Mayor Cloven on our screen, so I will make note of when he enters the room.
Great, thank you, Janet. Item number two on the agenda is a meeting protocol video. Janet, will you please do the?
Sure.
Due to COVID-19, this meeting will be conducted as a Zoom webinar pursuant to the provisions of the AB 361, which suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act. This meeting is also being webcast on the City of Clayton's website. The mayor will call upon its council presenter staff and other speakers by name and ask that they speak clearly and state their names before giving comments or remarks. Persons participating via webcast and Zoom with their cameras enabled are reminded that their activities are visible to viewers. Members of the public participating by Zoom wishing to speak should use the raise hand feature or dial star nine and the mayor will call upon them at the appropriate time. Telephone attendees will be called upon by the last four digits of their phone number. It is requested that public speakers state their name, but providing such information is voluntary. Written public comments received by the Clayton City Clerk by 5:00 PM today will be entered into the record but will not be read out loud. If authors of the written correspondence would like to speak, they are free to do so and should raise their hand and the mayor will call upon them at the appropriate time. A roll call vote will be taken for all action items. The chat feature is not active. In order to get the full Zoom experience, please make sure your application is up to date.
Great, thank you, Janet. And I see that the mayor has just joined us. Welcome, Mayor. I can't hear you, though, even though it says you're unmuted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Excellent. Thank you, Vice. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Where are we in the agenda?
We are on item number three, the Pledge of Allegiance.
Excellent. Councilmember Diaz, will you take it over, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Diaz. Much appreciated. And we'll move on to our consent calendar. Item number four. Are there any items on the consent calendar which are being requested to be pulled for tonight?
Move approval, Diaz.
Thanks, Councilmember Diaz. But before we can do that, I'd like to take it to the public and to see if there is any public comment on this particular item. Janet, do we have any hands raised for this?
Mayor Cloven, I have 13 attendees and zero hands raised on this item.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And with that, we will close public comment and bring it back for discussion. We do have a motion on the table from Councilmember Diaz for approval. Is there a second on this?
Second.
Excellent. First by Councilmember Diaz and then a second by Councilmember Juan. Janet, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Juan?
Hi.
Councilmember Wolf?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tillman?
Yes.
Mayor Cloven?
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate it, Janet. It passes five to nothing and we'll move on to item number five, which is recognitions and presentations. We have a couple of this night, we're going to item A and five A and B are pretty much the same. I think we're going to start off with well, item five, number five A, which is American Heritage Month. We have read the proclamation previously and it also acknowledged Autism Month, Acceptance Month in April. And we'll move on then from item number eight, five A to item number five B. And we have a couple proclamations for this evening with item number five B, the proclamation declaring Clayton Library Week for the City of Clayton from April 3rd to April 9th. And with that, I will read it as follows. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that foster a sense of connection and build community. And whereas libraries connect people to technology, providing access to broadband internet, computers and training that are critical for accessing education and employment opportunities. And whereas libraries offer opportunities for everyone to connect with new ideas and become their best selves through access to multimedia content, programs and classes in addition to books. And whereas today's libraries and their services extend far beyond the four walls of the building and welcome everyone is that everyone is welcome to use their resources. And whereas in times of crisis, libraries and library professionals play an invaluable role in supporting their communities, both in person and virtually. And whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are diverse as the population they serve and ensure equity for of access for all. And whereas to adopt, adapt to our changing world, libraries are extending their resources and continuing to meet their needs of their patient patrons. And whereas libraries have long served as trusses and treasure institutions for all members of the community, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. And whereas libraries are the cornerstone of democracy promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas libraries, librarians and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Peter Cloven, Mayor, on behalf of the entire Clayton City Council proclaim National Library Week, April 3rd to 9th, 2022. During this week, we encourage all residents to connect with their library by visiting online or in person to access resources and services.
And Mayor, we do have our new branch librarian here to join us this evening for this item. So we'd like to give her an opportunity to give the council a brief update on our Clayton Library, if that is acceptable.
Please do. Welcome.
Thank you. So as Raina introduced me, I am the new manager here. My name is Geneva Moss. I came over from managing another one of our branches in the system. I've worked in the system for about 16 years. And I just had some brief remarks about National Library Week and a little bit about the Clayton Library. I, first of all, do want to thank you, Mayor Cloven, Vice Mayor Tillman, and the rest of the members of the city council for recognizing National Library Week 2022 and welcoming me to your meeting tonight. It's a pleasure to come in and put a face to the name of those I've seen and some, some of the documents and such as I've settled into this community. As you know, libraries, librarians and library workers play an essential role in transforming lives and strengthening communities. National Library Week is a chance to recognize the libraries and those who work there for all they do. The theme for this year's National Library Week, as the mayor mentioned during the proclamation, is connect with your library. This is to promote the idea that libraries are places to get connected to technology by using broadband, computers and other digital resources. Libraries also connect people and other to others and their community, though, as well. Every day when you come in, you could see kids playing in the area, kids' area, parents connecting and such. It's, it's a joy to see the connections that are made between people as well as the things they get done by using our technology. And as the world continues to navigate the pandemic and the many ways it impacts our lives, Contra Costa County Library continues to rethink traditional library services. We've added more eBooks and e-audiobooks to the collection and we reached just under 1.5 million digital checkouts last year. We also saw huge increases in the use of our online newspapers like the New York Times, East Bay Times and Wall Street Journal. We've offered a wide variety of online programs for patrons of all ages and we are working on a plan to bring back in-person programming this summer. So we should have information about that very soon. And in effort to support families who may still be working in schooling from home, we introduced landable Wi-Fi hotspots, raspberry pies and new digital resources to our collection. In support of our communities across the county, the library also added open hours at 17 branches last year for a total of 121 extra hours per week. Several branches are also serving lunches or providing meal or produce boxes to the community in partnership with their local school districts. Here at the Clayton Community Library, seeing the public enjoy their time here is energizing for the staff. And so we are so happy to see more people coming in to use our services, the buildings and the items we offer. We've seen an approximately 59% increase in the number of items checked out at our branch over year-to-date figures from this time last year. So this time last year, it was just a couple of weeks before we opened our doors. And since we've opened the doors, people are definitely coming back. In addition to the public, many of our volunteers have returned. So the staff and volunteers have been working together diligently to meet the increasing needs of the community. And again, just thank you for celebrating National Library Week. I look forward to seeing you here at the library. And I appreciate you recognizing the important role of libraries in our society.
Geneva, thank you very much. Very much appreciate it. Welcome to our town. Appreciate it.
And in addition to the New York Times and the Washington Post, we hope you have the the celebrated Concord Clayton Pioneer and the Diablo Gazette.
We have that and hard copy and archives to go with it.
Excellent. Welcome and thank you very much. And with that, we'll close item nine, five B and move on to item five C, which is a proclamation declaring April 24th as Armenian Genocide Remembrance Day in the City of Clayton. And I will read that right now. Whereas human rights advocates and historians from around the world recognize and mourn the 1.5 million Armenians who perished in the Armenian genocide as ordered by the government of the Ottoman Empire, which began on April 24th, 1915, with the arrest, exile and murder of hundreds of Armenian intellectuals, political, religious and business leaders. And whereas during the 1915 to 1923 genocide, Armenian survivors were forced to witness the slaughter of their relatives and the loss of their ancestral land and property in now what is known as the first genocide of the 20th century. And whereas the government of the Ottoman Empire claimed the lives of 1.5 million Armenians and forced 500,000 more from their homeland, the Armenian genocide was a terrible breach of human rights and an event that has outraged the world. And whereas the atrocities carried out against the Armenian people were grave and unimaginable as they were subjected to deportation, abduction, torture, starvation and more. And as with any violent conflict, Armenian women and children suffered the worst abuses. The bulk of the American population, Armenian population that was displaced from their homes was forced to escape the neighboring areas as well as faraway countries, including the United States. And whereas the United States is honored to be the home of a vibrant, growing Armenian-American population. This thriving community is a proud reminder of the survival and determination, even in the face of extreme injustice. Whereas as Americans, it is our duty to raise awareness of the Armenian genocide and to participate in the remembrance and mourning and the loss of innocent lives more than a century ago. And whereas the failure to learn from the past allows for history repeat itself. As the world saw during the 2020 Nagoro Karaba War, when the military forces of Azerbaijan, Turkey attacked the Armenian civilization population of Nagorno-Karabakh and its churches and civic buildings, resulting in the casualties and losses of ancestral land and property motivated by the same genocide campaign that their ancestors suffered 106 years earlier. Now therefore, I, Peter Cloven, Mayor, and on behalf of the entire Clayton City Council proclaim April 24th as Armenian Genocide Remembrance Day in Clayton, California. And I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. Thank you for that. And with that, item C is closed. Five C is closed. And we will now move on to reports, item number six, and we'll start off with item six A, the city manager report. Raina, you're up.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Just a couple of items this evening. On the consent calendar, you approved the council's high-level goals for FY '23 that came out of the March 21st special meeting. In addition, at that meeting, we did discuss the council guidelines as well as requests for future council items. So we are working on putting together that list that will come back approximately quarterly on those items that have been requested and move forward with a regular check-in on that and the opportunity to provide additional prioritization over time on those items. The second thing is that our survey that we requested from SRI on the potential tax measure, all of the calling and data collection has been completed. The firm is now working on the analysis and we will have a presentation on that, those results at the May 3rd council meeting. The goal was to have about 300 persons reached. I think the total was about 307. So a robust ability to get that number met. And the questions that were asked in the survey were developed by the survey firm in conjunction with myself and staff. None of the council members, none of you got to see those or did I ask you any questions about them or give you any opportunity to ask me any questions about them? We relied heavily on the experience of the survey consultant as well as just our knowledge of the, the local community. So that will be coming May 3rd. That will be very exciting. And then the last piece is, we did close after the weekend, our Housing Element Balancing Act software simulation that we had up for about a month. For a community our size, we had very good participation. We got about 320 folks who engaged with the software. We had 44 plans submitted. So on a percentage basis, that was really quite, quite good compared to some other jurisdictions. So we're, we're really pleased with that. And that information will inform the items that are coming back to the planning commission and the council on the housing element as we go into the summer and into the fall. So we are knee-deep in looking at those results so that we can bring those back with the draft housing element pieces. And with that, that is my report for this evening.
Can I ask you a follow-up question on one of those items?
Sure.
Are we going to get, or is it going to be available, the background information or, you know, all the detail behind both the, the results from the housing element activity that you had just mentioned as well as the survey? Like, what are we going to get? Are we just going to get survey? Sorry, are we just going to get summary information or are we going to get like the detail behind it?
Um, so on the, speaking first to the survey, there will be a a report that goes through the analysis, there will be a presentation of the results, and there will be an entire set of statistical cross tabs. So all of the questions, the percentages, et cetera. So all of that data will be provided with the report. And we'll have that for the May 3rd meeting. So we will have that. And on the balancing act, I have not yet had a chance to really figure out and talk with Dana Ayers, our community development director, how we're going to present that information. But we certainly are going to make that available because we have comments that came in on all of the submissions as well as sort of, you know, how many housing units were, you know, requested to be added to a particular area or taken away from a particular area based on, on what the starting numbers were. So that's a little more challenging to figure out how to present that information because it doesn't lay out very well, but we'll have all of that data.
Okay. So this isn't like the sales tax data where they told us that they couldn't give us underlying detail. Like, is there, is there anything that would be restricted from us? If, even if they don't present it, if we have follow-up questions on it, is that something that they're going to be able to provide?
On the, on the survey data, we should be able to, you know, have all of the backup statistical information. On balancing act, we don't have names or identifying information on anything. So we should be able to provide any of the data. You know, submissions that came in on the, on the housing element plans that were submitted.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent. And with that, item six A is closed. We move on to six B, which is the city council reports. And let's start out with Councilmember Wolf.
There we go. Thank you, Mayor. All right. Of course, I attended the goal-setting session. Met several times with you, Mayor, and with our city manager. Also met with our police chief and also Sergeant Shaw. I had a nice conversation at my house, which was good. Met with our barbecue committee for CBCA and they've asked me to co-chair the barbecue committee and I will be doing that and working with the two Steves, Steve Biggs and Steve Pierce. So there'll be a three-person co-chair for that. So that'll be nice. Also, I have accepted a position on the CBC Advisory, CBCA Advisory Committee. And looking forward to our first meeting this week. And let's see, had a couple of thank yous from our citizens this week in our correspondence. You probably all got these, but nevertheless, for the red curb painting over near CVS, had a couple of thank yous from a couple of different citizens there. And the new sightlines there, I guess, are going over very big. And also the signal ahead signs near the Diablo View Middle School also had a couple of had one thank you from there. And let me see if there's anything else here. I think that is, oh, by the way, the barbecue still on for July 9th and 10th, the barbecue cook-off. So look forward to seeing everybody there. Okay, that's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, we'll move on to Councilmember Juan.
Mostly just phone calls. Any else just to go around?
Thanks, Councilmember Juan. I, I understand that. I definitely do. How about you, Vice Mayor Tillman? You can be next.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, I had a couple of meetings with our city manager. I had a meeting with you. I also attended the goal-setting session on the 21st. On the 23rd, I had a call with an Eagle Scout who's working on, towards his Eagle Scout project. And he needed to talk to a government official trying to get advice on ways that the youth can get involved. He chose to, to focus on ways that the youth can get involved in government, in their communities. And then he also partnered, not partnered, but spoke to our city maintenance staff and has upgraded some of the benches and tables at the Clayton Community Park. I don't know if anybody's been up there to see them. I saw the pictures and they look fantastic. On the 24th, I attended an elected women's luncheon, which was nice to be able to meet some of the local electives who will be running for office as well as others who have been serving their communities, whether it's with the the Diamond Jubilee that's happening with the Diablo Symphony that's coming up, I believe, at the end of this month. If anybody's interested in the symphony, you can attend that. But it's nice to be able to network and meet others that are in our surrounding areas that are, whether they're working with nonprofits, they're elected officials, just wanting to do good for the community. That was on the 24th. On the 31st, I attended the Board of Supervisors Forum so that I can hear from the five candidates who are running for Board of Supervisors in District Four, which is Karen Mitchoff's district. That was nice. I've actually met with almost all of them and had met them personally in some way or fashion prior to them submitting, but it was nice to actually hear them in person. And then I also jetted down to Danville to attend the first in-person Cal City's East Bay Division meeting. That was great. And then I know that Geneva Moss didn't mention it, but there was the Clayton Library Book Sale. I did not attend that because I had prior commitments and I'm now out of town. But I wanted to let everybody know, since I am the liaison to the Clayton Library Foundation, that they did raise as of just before noon today, I saw an email that said that they raised $3,744.72. So thank you to everybody. If you're on and you participated, thank you for that. And then last but not least, I wanted to just give a nod to our fantastic Mount Diablo Elementary School Odyssey of the Mind participants. I think you guys recall that they came on last year and we actually gave them a, I think we had done a proclamation for them. They have placed first in Northern California in the Odyssey of the Mind tournament. And up next is the world finals for them at Iowa State University at the end of May. So kudos to Team Smarties, which was their team name. And I, if I may, I just want to read a little bit about what they accomplished in a short amount of time. So bear with me. Let me pull it up. All right. So their journey to the world finals reads, "The journey to the world finals started back in October 2021 as seven girls combined to form a team to represent Mount Diablo Elementary School. The girls worked hard to complete their solution to the long-term problem as the months progressed. Weekly meetings taught the girls to work together, use engineering skills, be creative and overcome adversity. The first competition occurred at Concord High School in late February. The girls named their team Team Smarties based on the Candyland theme of their script, backdrops and props. The team prevailed against 11 other teams to take first place in the regional tournament. Team Smarties furthered their winning streak by placing first in the NorCal State Tournament in March. Way to go, Team Smarties." And now they're headed to the Iowa State, I mean, to the world finals at Iowa State University at the end of May. So bravo to those fine young ladies. So let's wish them luck at the end of May. They're trying to raise funds now to, so that everybody can go and a huge thank you to Renee Kulp, who was their coach, who's daughter is a sophomore with my youngest. She does not have a child in elementary school, but she's so committed to this, to the Odyssey of the Minds and, and making sure that these students have access to that. And bravo to Nicole, I mean, not Nicole, Renee. Thank you. That's it. Thanks, Mayor.
Can I, can I ask you a question, Holly?
Sure.
Mayor, can I, can I do that? What is the, when you're talking about raising funds, is there a website or is there some communication that needs?
Sure. There's a GoFundMe that one of the parents and Renee, their coach posted, I think we saw it last night or the night before. I can forward that to everyone here and I can share it on my social media if you'd like. But it's on Facebook right now and I'll try to see if I can find ways to get it shared out more broadly. Maybe I'll ask Tamara from the Pioneer if she can share it too. So
Thank you.
It's a GoFundMe that they're trying to raise $8,000 so that all of them can, can participate, including the coach. So great, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Vice Mayor Tillman. That was a great report and I'm really excited about our Mount Diablo team. And Renee, thank you very much.
And one more thing I could add, if I may, I don't know if I said it or not, but this will be the first time that Mount Diablo Elementary School, and I think even our district is going to the finals, world finals.
That's awesome. That is just awesome.
Thanks.
Excellent. And with that, we'll move on to Councilmember Diaz. For your report, please.
Thank you. First, an observation. For those of you familiar with Hispanic art history, I see tonight we have Frito Calo joining us on the, on the video tonight. But I don't see her significant other Diego of the era. So I just wonder how Frida is doing with Diego. But anyway, the first thing was on the 17th, on the, on that Thursday, was I hope everybody had a wonderful St. Patrick's Day. Clayton was downtown was alive. The, the Mudville was very well attended and we had our usual dinner from the from the chop off. So it was a great day for the Irish of those in our community. On the 31st, had meetings both with the city manager and, and the chief of police and related to a number of things, including the, the goal-setting meeting, which we had later, later that evening. And on the 23rd, I also met again with the city manager, following up on the progress for the survey. And I have to admit, she was very close to the vest. She would not let me know anything about the questions or the stats up at that point. So very good. On the 28th, or excuse me, on the 29th, I went to the Contra Costa Board of Supervisors. Contra Costa Board of Supervisors meeting. They had the twenty-eighth annual uh Caesar Chavez Celebration, as well as the Youth Hall of Fame uh the Foundation Awards. Great events. Mariachi's dancers. It was spectacular at the at the brand new uh chambers for the uh for the Board of Supervisors. Uh, on the thirty first, I attended the District Four Candidates Forum, put on by the uh East Bay Leadership Council and a number of other uh organizations and the five candidates uh that are hopeful to sit re- replace uh Karen Mitchoff as the supervisor. So it's important to us to stay in contact with the those five candidates and we'll see what happens on June seventh uh when that is finally settled. On the first of April, uh hundred, attended the uh EBRICS meeting and basically that was another one of those meetings we had to have based upon that assembly bill that requires us to uh endorse the fact that we have Zoom meetings. On the uh second yeah, the second of uh excuse me, the third of uh of uh April, uh we had the Art and Wine Committee meeting. That is going to be a spectacular event. It looks very, very promising. We have in just a huge number of vendors that are signing up for that. Uh, the planning is uh moving very well under the leadership of uh Sandy Johnson, who is the chair of that event. And the various uh members of the uh of the committee that all have their responsibilities. It's going to be a spectacular return to live uh festivals in downtown Clayton on the twenty-third and twenty-fourth of April. Uh, on the fifth today, met again with the city manager and uh Chief Police Warren on a variety of issues. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Mayor, may I ask number Diaz a quick question about the Art and Wine Festival?
By all means.
Do you know if they still need volunteers? Um, for anybody who's listening, do they still need volunteers on either of those those days?
Yes, and uh that is being coordinated for the adults by uh a former council member uh Tuya Catalano, who's on vacation this week. But yes, need volunteers.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jim. Um, Councilmember Diaz, I really, really appreciate that and appreciate your involvement. I had an interesting couple of weeks after our meeting on Monday, March twenty-first for our goal setting. Uh, three days later, I came down with COVID. Now, this is kind of a public service, first public service announcement. Um, I am double vaccinated and boosted and uh let my guard down when I took my kids to go see uh the Harry Potter production in San Francisco uh for four hours in a tight theater and it it bit me and it took us. It was not fun. It took me out for three days. So and the reason why I'm saying this is that I am the first person to say I want for us to get back to normal and to us to be in person, and that has been my goal all along. And our first in-person meeting is scheduled for two weeks from now on April nineteenth. Uh, I intend, we intend to meet in person. I just want all of you out there listening now to know this has not gone away. And even though you may be vaccinated and boosted, it's still out there. And for you to be vigilant, wear your mask where it's appropriate, try to keep your distance and carry a bottle of hand sanitizer because it it can get you. And I, it's been nine days, ten days since my first symptoms and I still tested positive. I'm still testing positive. So I'm glad you're meeting virtually today. So just wanted to give you a heads up. That uh caused a crimp in a lot of my desire to be involved with certain things that which I had RSVP'd for. I was supposed to be at the uh roundtable, legislative roundtable in Danville um with the League of Cities and was not able to make that. I was supposed to go to the CBCA meeting, was not able to make that. Thank you, those who did go in in our in our place and represented Clayton. It's important for us to be a part of all that. Lastly, um as a result of our recent conversations during the city council meetings, I've posted a couple of articles. Not only in the Pioneer, but also in the Gazette, talking about our current financial situation and conversations that need to happen associated with that. Let's just say I've received a robust uh list of emails and phone calls, which I have been responding to all. And listening intently on uh our citizens and their solutions. Um, it was my desire to put together some type of citizens committee um to help us with this so that they they can be involved. Timing is getting very, very challenging to do that. So what I will be doing is contacting each and every one of those people that I've spoken with and asking them to be present in the very um multitude of conversations we're going to be having in the next two months in May, June, and even into early July as we go uh and talk about our budget concerns and what we're going to do relative to our twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget. We are very fortunate that we have this uh our new ClearGov software that's going to help us uh with uh transparency and allowing our citizens to see what's happening and and be a part of that conversation. And I encourage everybody who has questions to be involved because I'm getting some great, great input, um things I haven't thought of and I appreciate it. And with that, that's the end of my report and we will close item number six for our staff reports. And let's move on to item number seven, which is public comment for non-agenda items. And this is your time as citizens to uh and residents of Clayton to to talk about anything that's on your mind. It's not on the agenda tonight. You get three minutes. As always, I will ask you, please, to be kind and respectful to the council members and in your words. Please address the council as a whole and not an individual council member. We all work together as one body to do what's best for Clayton. And with that, Janet, do we have any hands that are raised for public comment?
Yes, Mayor, I have two hands raised out of twenty attendees. Our first hand is from James. James, as I permit you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Uh, good day, everyone. Can everyone hear me?
James, welcome. We can hear you well.
Great. Um, when I first became aware of the city's deficit and need for parcel taxes, I I was angry and also in denial. But now I am in acceptance of the situation after speaking individually with most members of the council. Hopefully, the public can get through these stages quickly before any ballot measure. A favorite work model of mine is if you live a lie, you must own it. This is very important when it comes to budget forecasting. Use the wrong assumptions, see your city potentially go bankrupt. In Clayton's case, the city council prior to twenty eighteen, even though they were aware of the unfunded pension liability, they ignored it. In contrast, if you look at the Concord City Council um agenda and minutes, they factor these right assumptions into their twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen budget. So what do we need to do? We need a transparent budget forecast to closing all key assumptions and unusual items by year, such as payroll and non-payroll inflation factors, plus the normal and unfunded pension liability burden percentages. This is important to build trust with the citizens of Clayton. Consider restructuring all Clayton's special taxes assessments so they all reclassified to the general fund. You need to generate a landscaping maintenance schedule so you can optimize these services and consider reducing staff. Plus, if you keep the twenty twenty-three assessments flat with the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two taxes, that would provide you a hundred and thirty dollar per parcel windfall windfall for most residents as the Diablo View Middle School bond expires this year. Finally, for staffing and paying city workers, you must make some tough decisions. My recommendation is to pay the city manager at or above market as this position keeps the city afloat. However, this priority does not extend to other city workers where only reasonable, affordable cost of living increases should be provided. This is the only way to pay for the Honors Future Pension Payments. And again, I want to thank all the council members I spoke with. You're doing a great job and I know this is a tough situation to get through in the next two months and the public needs to understand if you, what you've told me is if you don't do it right now, you would have to wait two years from now. So again, I wanted to spread that message from what I've heard from the council members. It is a tough time. And again, I want to thank each of the council members for the work they're doing. Thank you.
James, thank you very much for your comments, duly noted and appreciated. Janet, do we have any other hands raised for this item?
We do. Our next hand is uh Dee. This is one hand out of twenty attendees. Dee, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, council and staff. Can you hear me?
Dee, welcome. We certainly can.
Well, first, uh Mayor Clavon, I have, I I hope that you are feeling better. Uh, on behalf of myself and the entire Clayton Pride Planning Committee and Rainbow Community Center of Contra Costa County, we would like to invite you all to be in our first historical parade, Pride Parade in Clayton on June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. It will be held in downtown at ten AM and we are modeling after the Fourth of July parade. So um the route will be the same as the Fourth of July parade. This is a family-friendly event and it would be an honor to have you participate in the parade by way of car or walking. And we are currently working on getting some convertibles to carry our local dignitaries. So if you could please extend this invite to other city staff and commissioners as their presence would be appreciated too. I couldn't find the planning commissioner's emails on the website. Um, and so for more information, please visit claytonpride.com. You will find the parade entrant form there that you can either fill out online or print and scan and send it to claytonprideparade@gmail.com. I sure hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Dee. Much appreciated. Janet, do we have any other hands raised for this item for public comment?
Mayor Cloven, out of twenty attendees, I do not have any other hands raised.
Thank you, Janet. Very much appreciated. And with that, we will close item number seven for public comment and non-agenda items. And move on to item number eight, which is public hearings for which we have none. And we'll move on to item number nine, which is action items. And we'll move on to item number nine A, which is uh adopt a resolution approving the amending and reporting of the use of American Rescue Fund, American Rescue Plan Act Funds, ARPA Funds in compliance with the U.S. Treasury Department's planter rule for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. And with that, we'll pass it on to the finance director and our city manager.
Thank you, uh Mayor. I will be making a brief presentation this evening, although our finance director is also uh in the audience. So um if there are additional questions for her, we can easily move her into the room, as we say. Um, it's a fairly straightforward item before you this evening related to your ARPA funds. As I have mentioned before, um, the city received its first ARPA funds last summer and we were operating in those initial discussions under the interim final rule from the U.S. Treasury Department and um that uh had very specific categories for our spending, et cetera. In January of this year, the Treasury Department implemented their final rule and one of the most significant changes they made is that for the category of revenue replacement or revenue loss, where the interim rule had a fairly complex formula that jurisdictions needed to complete to determine whether or not they had uh revenue loss that would allow the jurisdiction essentially more flexibility in using the funds. The Treasury has identified that there is essentially a bit like a standard deduction on your taxes. So you can check a box that says, yes, I'd like to take the standard deduction of our um up to ten million dollars, depending on the grant amount that comes to the local government. Um, and that allows those funds to be um documented via the provision of general governmental services. So for example, public safety or any of our other governmental services. Then the ARPA funds um are used for those general governmental services. And the recommendation before you in the resolution is to create a pandemic recovery reserve, but essentially another uh bucket for us to track the the spending of those dollars so that we don't lose any of the programmatic decisions that the council has already made and we don't lose the ability to make specific programmatic decisions uh or any other programming decisions for the use of those funds. The most important piece about this is that it dramatically simplifies the reporting and auditing functions associated with the receipt of these federal funds. Given our small staff and our um, you know, limited capacity for uh a lot of additional detailed reporting um to meet the federal requirements and um the feds are notorious for a great deal of paperwork for uh grants that come in. Um, this is a uh a much simpler and more straightforward uh approach to the reporting and auditing uh and allows us to focus really on what we're trying to do programmatically with the funds and not trying to ensure that we can fit into um the exact box that the federal government has asked us to, you know, slot all of our individual components. Um, so again, it doesn't change any of the decisions that the council has made with respect to programming, nor does it reduce in any way the flexibility with future programming, but it does uh vastly simplify the reporting and auditing requirements. And with that, I am available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Raina. Much appreciated. And as I understand it, tonight, we're just uh um basically approving a resolution to change the to for the use and the reporting of these funds in accordance with the new requirements, correct? That we're not talking about how we're going to use them. This is a different conversation for another night. Is that correct?
That's correct. This is really changing um the the buckets in which we um count those dollars and track those dollars. Um, the decisions that the council has already made stand and the decisions that the council has yet to make in terms of programming will come down the line in conjunction with our budget process and the second tranche of funding, which we expect to get this summer.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And with that, are there any questions from from council of our staff on this item? Excellent. Seeing none. I will open this item up for public comment. And Janet, can you tell me if there are any hands raised relative to item five A, which is this item on the budget regarding ARPA funding?
Mayor Cloven, I have seventeen attendees and zero hands raised on this item.
Thank you very much, Janet. Much appreciated. And with no hands raised, we will close public comment on item five A and bring it back to discussion uh to the city council. Is there any council, are there any council members who have any thing they'd like to say regarding this particular item?
Move to approve as uh as written.
Got a first from council member Wolf. Is there a second for this item?
I'll second.
Got a first by Wolf, a second by Vice Mayor Tillman. Janet, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Juan?
Hi.
Councilmember Wolf?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tillman?
Yes.
Mayor Cloven?
Yes, indeed. And that closes item number five A with a vote of five to nothing. And we'll move on to item number five nine, pardon, nine, nine, nine B, none, uh pose nine A and move on to nine B, which is a resolution of the city council and the city of Clayton opposing this California statewide ballot initiative twenty-one dash zero zero forty-two A one sponsored by the California Business Roundtable. Will you uh give us a report for that, Raina, please?
Thank you, Mayor and council. So this particular ballot uh initiative, which is being circulated for signature right now is entitled the Tax Fairness Transparency and Accountability Act and is sponsored by the California Business Roundtable. The um measure would put into the state constitution a number of additional restrictions on essentially local government's ability to raise revenue um to meet local needs. Um, and so the the, I think, one of the most And so the, the, I think one of the most challenging issues related to this is that by putting such sort of ballot box budgeting in the state constitution, it really eliminates further the ability of local elected officials, such as this council or other councils, their ability to determine the needs for their community and work to meet those needs from a revenue standpoint. So while this measure talks about accountability, it doesn't allow for full accountability and decision-making at the local level regarding, you know, fines, fees, tax measures, et cetera. So it further constricts the ability to raise revenues, which as this council has talked about, is something that Clayton is currently discussing and is really faced with. And just kind of continues to erode our ability to do that. And it is not a best practice from a policy standpoint to put these kinds of restrictions in at a statewide level in the state constitution and not allow those decisions to be made at the local level. So the CalCities has asked local jurisdictions to adopt resolutions opposing this particular ballot measure. While it is still circulating, the, the desire is to have a strong showing. And, and there are many jurisdictions who have already come out in opposition to the measure. And this resolution in front of you this evening would add Clayton's name to that list of jurisdictions that are in opposition to this particular measure being on the ballot for November of 2022. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council, do you have any questions of our city manager? All right. Seeing none, we're going to move item 9A open to public comment. Public, if you have a comment regarding, action number 9A regarding a resolution opposing this ballot initiative, please raise your hand.
That's actually a 9B.
Or 9B, beg your pardon. A little off tonight.
Mayor Cloven, I, I have 17 attendees and zero hands raised.
Thank you, Janet. Much appreciated. With that, we will close public comment on item 9B and bring it back to discussion by the city council. Is there any discussion that council member would like to open on this item? There being no discussion, I entertain a motion to approve a resolution accordingly.
Move approval, Tillman.
I'll second.
Got a motion to prove by Tillman and a second by Councilmember Wolf. Janet, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Juan?
No.
Councilmember Wolf?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tillman?
Yes.
Mayor Cloven?
Yes. And with that, item number 9B passes four to one. And we will close item number B, item number 9B and move to item number 10, closed session for which there is none. And then move on to item number 11, which is council items. Well, council requests for future directs and future meetings. Are there any for the, tonight, for future meetings?
I don't have a future item, but I do want to say congratulations and we're sorry to lose our police chief Warren. Fabulous police chief, been here for four years, did some great things for this city. And it just goes to show that we are in desperate need of being able to retain our excellent staff.
Thank you, Councilmember Wolf. And with that, we'll close item number 11 for council items for the future and move to item number 12, which is adjournment. And with that, at 7:55.
I do want to make a comment. I'm terribly disappointed that Frida Calo, who apparently came back from the dead to join our meeting tonight, did not bring Diego Vieira with her. So, and by the way, there's other notable people on the, on the list that attended our meeting tonight, which I will not comment on. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, at 7:55 PM, we will close this meeting. It's adjourned to our next meeting on April 5th. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.